Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to our meeting. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Rockville Center Board of Education for Wednesday, November 14th to order. Could everybody join, stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd just like to point out, in case of an emergency, the two doors at the back of the room are exits, and you can exit out to the parking lot here or follow the hallway down to the next exit to out in the parking lot if need be. Any and all correspondence that can be posted are posted out on the table in the hallway for anybody who's interested in looking at them. And Dr. Johnson, we're at the...
If you're wondering why I have this big grin on my face, just look around the room and understand, we've been waiting for this for a while now. This is something we've really been looking forward to. I'm going to ask Ms. Dr. Pelletiere if you would just take a minute to introduce the group and the project, and off we go.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. I'm actually going to toss it over, I think, to Ms. Montemorano. I see Ms. Waldman is here as well. We have some special guests, high-special guests from Watson School who are here tonight to talk about their Maker Fun Factory that they have in their building, which is really an awesome adventure. We do have a video that we're going to show as well. Ms. Montemorano, how do we want to do this?
The kids are going to speak first, they'll introduce themselves.
Yes, good. Okay, great. Can we have them come up to the mic, or do you want to pass the mic out and just have them work off of that? Yeah, why don't you come up? This way, you're on...
Yes.
You can bend that mic down. There you go.
Should I start?
Are you guys in size order? Did you plan this, or...
Are they on TV?
Almost. This is outstanding. Hit it.
Good evening. My name is Sophia, and I'm a fifth grader at Watson. My friends and I are going to tell you about the new Makerspace at Watson School. Makerspace is a new wave in education. It is a room where you can let your mind explore. You don't have to worry about getting anything wrong. The whole purpose is trying, but not always getting it the first time. We are experimenting. It took me a while to get the hang of flying a drone. I kept working at it until I was finally successful. It was a great feeling. I learned that if you really want to accomplish something and you set your mind to it, you will achieve success.
Good... Good evening. I am Rory, and I'm also in fifth grade. Back in September, I attended a Maker Fair at the New York Hall of Science in Queens. I have been going with my family for the last several years. The slogan was, "It's the greatest show until on earth." I am so into Maker Fair that I made a PowerPoint slideshow and shared it with my classmates. I'm really interested in Watson's Makerspace and all the cool things we do in there. We have been keeping track of all the activities and STEM journals that we created using Keynote on our iPads. We have been taking pictures and even time-lapse videos of how we progressed through each challenge. I'm thinking of becoming an electrician in the future because I like working with machines, and both Maker Fair and Makerspace give me the opportunity.
My name is Anna. I went to Maker Fair a few years ago, too. Digital 3D printers were showcased there. I hope we can get one for Watson's Makerspace. In Watson's Makerspace, the students direct the learning, and we work together to find solutions. That was basically the theme of Watson's Evening of Exploration held back in October. Each classroom held different activities, and the school was morphed into one big Makerspace. Kids worked together to figure things out. There are puzzles, mazes, and hands-on brainteasers in our Makerspace. There is so much to choose from, there is something for everyone.
I am Jaden. I worked with my fifth-grade classmates to figure out how to operate little-bit circuits, scribble robots, qubits, and build a car kit. We were given the tools and basically told to come up with explanations and results. Probably the most exciting thing in our Makerspace has been the drones. Kids love to operate them, and we learn the positives and negatives of the drones used by the public. We also learn with the FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration, is doing to keep our skies safe.
My name is Madalena, and I'm a third grader at Watson. In Makerspace, kids work together to create cool sculptures and play with robots. One of my favorite activities is building marble ones. You have to keep trying until you get the marble through the maze you created. Third graders also love Conductor Lights, Kiva Box, and Arts and Crafts Center, where you can let your imagination run wild. When I grow up, I want to be either a famous soccer player or a teacher. If I become a teacher, I would reward my students by letting them go to the Makerspace when they are good.
My name is... My name is Callum, and I am also a third grader at Watson. I want to be in the military when I grow up. In the Makerspace, it's we work together to build things and solve problems. Hold up. That will help me in my future career. One example of solving a problem was when we were using Legos to create different structures. I was working on a hoverboard and had to keep trying to find the right pieces. We have to learn to solve the problems by ourselves using trial and error. I finally got it right. Now, we would like to share a video of Watson's Makerspace in action.
All right, welcome to Watson's Makerspace. It's our Maker Fun Factory. Come on in!
We were introduced to the Ministry of Motion while we were handed tips to build cars. One of them is, "An object in motion stays in motion," and "An object at rest stays at rest," unless my mom forces that on me. Step by step, we looked at the visual instructions to build a moving cabin. First, we needed to build a frame to hold the cabin and the wheels. Building these moving cabins incorporated STEM helped us learn more teamwork and was just plain fun. Little bits are color-coded magnetic blocks that are interchangeable and go in different ways. You connect these together, and you can get different creations. I made the auto wheel. A little bit's like you see what the inside of a machine looks like. I made LED matrix triple-destructive signal. Together, Shannon and I worked together and experimented, and we created a circuit that we named the pulse. A little bit is so amazing, and there are things where it's like the snap circuits can be third. I always wondered how things work in these types of things. All the wires that we did, those that end up in a machine, and other things that we do. Sometimes part of building is failing many times. From building houses to bridges with skyscrapers, we use a little bit to become architects.
I want to be an architect.
I want to be an architect, and this is great practice. These are qubits, and they hold a variety of different modules we watch. This is good to see for responding to hand movements. When I flip the sensor, it does the opposite called turn-out tracing. Undercover, I still respond to my hand, but if I flip the right-hand version, it moves and flips my hand on top. So cool! This is edge finder Edgar. I don't need to worry about my cube that's on the edge, but it knows when to stop. This is more to run, we must discover the robot. I was programmed on Maker High Level. At first, I thought it was crazy, and I had no idea how to do it. We took the teacher's suggestion, and programmed the robot all by ourselves. We even finished it before Mrs. Montemorano. Mrs. Montemorano called time, told everybody how to do it. We even made a square staircase. Right now, we are working on programming this script to make our mission. When we're done, we can help others. Watch this. So we see some sort of dominoes, we had to work together. We tried to make an initial set, but it didn't start out that way. That was by the location. Just one was placed down, and I was calling the whole picture. Teamwork is essential. I love the experience of being in the dominoes. I'm sure it would have been so good if they all fell down as a couple. We worked together, and they did this stuff for checking out.
Drones elevate the science experience. Drones have become really popular with their pros and cons. Some pros are, they can help you avoid during search and rescue missions and can bring you blood and mess into urban areas. But there are some cons, too. Some cons are, they can invade people's privacy and interfere with aircrafts in this back. I hope to learn more about these things in my future as a first responder.
Federal Aviation Administration is creating laws to help stop these problems. For example, you must fly drones under 400 feet. We still get to have fun and experiment.
Welcome to our great Makerspace. This is the Lego section of Makerspace. We built, we work together to build different structures. Legos are great. These are conduct lights. We use a fan that lights the LED light. You really need to concentrate to get the choices for the play-doh. This is the art of making Makerspace. We like to play together and use our imaginative ways to build everything we want to make.
We love to do giant polydromes together. We are trying to build a rocket using different pieces.
These are the Dash robots. When you press your name on your app, it synchronizes the robot, allowing you to control them. You can change the game's light, speed, and the colors of the stuff, too. You can also control the micro data.
These are the colors that we might have. They're more fun if you play together. These are little big sculptures like you're seeing. It takes teamwork to get the job done.
This is agenda. The purpose is to take blocks out of a giant town. You need to think carefully and use strategies because you don't want to let it fall.
We are making robots together. You have to connect the piece and grid. All of this, single edges and double edges. You have to work together to make the best board.
These are the snap circuits. When you put them together, they light up. These are challenging circuits. You need them in the exact way, the exact order for them to light up. We have so much fun exploring these in the Makerspace.
We have, we happen to have brought two drones with us. Would you like to see them fly?
Yes. I would like to fly one. Yes?
All right.
Do I need my microphone? No?
Can I fly them at the same time?
Yes. Of course.
Why don't we go to the front with Monroe?
Can we fly them around, Mrs. Waldman?
Have you practiced, Chris?
Want to take another one, Rory?
I'm nervous. You want to do it?
Want to get a starter, Rory? Then give it to Mrs. Pelletiere.
Whoa. What are you doing?
Not as easy as it looks.
Look at that.
The base has run out of air. How do I get it to go up here?
Rory, how about...
This is broken.
Operator.
Whoa.
Woo!
He's thumbs up it, too.
He's stuck.
Let me press the button. Press the button, and it'll stop. It'll stop, it'll stop.
Would you like me to help him?
Be careful.
Press the off button. It...
Okay, don't do anything.
Is it turned on?
It's on.
It's on.
Ooh!
The road light has to be facing you.
Show off, it's still going.
Okay, you have to turn it off, Rory.
I know.
I see that the qubits, I wrote this down, the dash and dot, the qubits were granted to each building by the Teacher Center. So our own teachers, through their Teacher Center grants, made them available to all the schools, so the schools have them. Dash and Dot Robots and Little Bits came through Education Foundation grants. So Watson School has really started their own industry almost, in terms of their partnership with the Education Foundation and what they've done. And our students here really are getting, as you could tell, the four Cs of 21st century teaching and learning. They are creative, they are communicating, they are certainly collaborating, and they are critical thinking and problem-solving around these issues. They've done a fantastic job. The video itself was actually shot by two high school students, so we're making sure that we're making those connections as well. Teddy Batkin and Anna Bingham, who went down to Watson and taught a lesson on robotics after she taped the video. So really a great connection between the elementary school and the high school. Mrs. Waldman's here tonight, her staff are outstanding staff as well. I really commend them for giving kids permission to fail. So Larry Page, who created Google, one of its early founders, says that his engineers do not fail fast enough. They are not learning to overcome obstacles fast enough. Places like Makerspace at Watson School give our kids safe places to wreck the place, right? It looked like my basement after a playdate for my daughter. And then put it back together and recognize that we can make mistakes here, we can learn here, and then we are the future architects and engineers and computer scientists. You guys are doing an incredible job. Thank you so much. Do you have anything else? Anything else from anybody?
Oh, wait, what about the keynote thing?
They're just so eager to share everything. They brought their STEM journals, the fifth graders have been keeping track of everything that they've done in these STEM journals that they've made on their iPads on Keynote. What's that?
Oh, they're video journals?
They have video journals of everything that they do, and everyone's different depending upon what activities they've taken part of in the Makerspace. So they're really proud of them. They did happen to bring them.
I don't know if we've, you think we could try and airplay it? I don't know if it's going to come up. I don't know if it's going to come up.
Can you get the airplay up?
I don't know if it's going to come up on her iPad. From the bottom.
Well, some of them now...
Okay, okay. Yeah.
Is it turned on?
It's on.
Do you want me to add?
It might say "High School Commons." I don't know if that's necessarily going to, we weren't prepared for that, I apologize. If you want to just talk us through it, what is it that the kids have in their journal?
Can you get it standing in front there and try to pull it up? Rory, can I get yours, too? Yeah, you can get yours, too. Just don't play it at the same time, because it'll be confusing. Hey, Nathan, what do you have on there?
This is three laws of motion.
Okay. Imagine they were building the cars. You have a video in there, Rory?
What happened?
It's not a slideshow.
So the kids made journals of their experiences in the Makerspace?
We actually try to tie in, you know, like the laws of motion, pros and cons of drones, a little science, not just fun games. We try to hit on some scientific principles and math.
Well, learning can be fun.
Learning can be fun.
Without a doubt.
They're doing a great job.
I'm just going to show the pictures.
There you go.
You have such shy kids in Watson School. I don't know what's, what you're doing over there. The staff is shy as well.
They go well with the shy teachers who are here as well tonight. That's right. Maybe they could stand up and just be recognized, the teachers who are here from Watson.
I may need to confiscate these drones, Mrs. Montemorano. Here you go. Guys, thank you so much. Outstanding job. Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Wait, can we have, can we take a picture up front?
Yes, can we, yes, up front.
Guys, go ahead in front here. Somebody grab the, grab the drones. Yeah. Sue.
John.
Grab the drones. There you go. Divvy it up. Divvy them up.
We're not a lot.
Rory?
We also have some children who were in the video.
Oh, they should come up as well. They should come up as well.
They should be up here.
It's John.
John, you should be up here.
Thank you, kids.
Well, what are we doing here, then?
If you guys can all spread out so that...
Very cute.
Very cool.
Okay, guys, ready?
You know, and they should be. It's fantastic.
It's awesome.
They belong.
Thank you.
Everybody get these young scientists home.
Yeah.
Thanks so much. Thanks for coming.
Shout out to everyone.
Give Mom a hug.
I will, I will. I'm going to tell Mrs. Rice to send me an email.
I definitely will use you.
They'll, eh?
It's fine. It's fine. I will definitely...
What about Ann Sue? She doesn't get a hug?
Send me an email, remind me, and I'll put it on talent.
Want to piece candy?
Go, Karen, you should go.
Yeah, I know. It's inappropriate.
Thank you, Watson.
Dr. Johnson, item for information?
From the wilds of Watson to the floor at Covert. So I'll turn this over to Mr. Bartels to talk us about the end of an interesting journey.
Yeah. Thanks, Dr. Johnson. Yeah, we are, we are finally finished with the floor at Covert. The gym floor, we had a number of problems with it buckling at the beginning of the school year. We had to go through a complete replacement process. So that floor is now finished. We actually had an air test done on Monday. We were hoping to have the results for tonight. We don't have them yet, so we should have them tomorrow. But this should complete all of the work that was done at Covert and open it back up for the kids.
It should also be stated, by the way, that it was at no cost to the school district. Our insurance policy paid for the entire replacement of the floor.
Yes.
Air conditioning work and all was not included in the insurance, right? The duck work?
No, that was something that we chose to do on our own. Yes.
All right. I know, I know they were hoping for it to be up next Tuesday for the sharing piece. I'm assuming that it will be.
We're pretty confident that it will be, yes.
Good, that'd be great. And I've heard, I haven't been there, but I've heard it looks beautiful. I guess people have been peeking in the door. Thank you very much. We're up to items for discussion. We are on, on stage two for 5681. I just have to find it. School safety plans. All good. We're all good on 5681. Stage three for 7580, education of students in temporary housing. Any questions? Questions? Nope. Moving on. We didn't have any from either. And we are, these are all for passing later on. Okay. All right, that was easy. Opportunity for superintendent, Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, just, one thing I just wanted to mention, by the way, and it's something going on here at Southside. We have a fall drama every year that is taking place. We are actually competing with it this evening. It's tonight, tomorrow night, Friday and Saturday. Kids are fabulous. I had an opportunity last week to interview two of them on my TV show that nobody watches, but it doesn't matter. It's always a great experience for me to meet some of these incredible students that we have here at the school. And I already can tell you, just on the basis of what I saw, that these productions are going to be terrific. So again, I think it's 7:30 each night tonight. We're not getting there tonight, obviously, but tomorrow night, Friday night and Saturday night. Thank you very much, that's it.
Opportunity for board members.
I would just like to thank, am I on? I would just like to thank the Watson staff and teachers, Mrs. Waldman, for coming and sharing such a special part of our school that's still developing. The kids just rave about it. They come home so excited about everything they do at Watson, but specifically this kind of new layer and new opportunity that they've been afforded. It's just wonderful to see them so excited to come share their ideas, and you can't really kind of call their passion, so, and that comes from all of you. So thank you very much for that. Also, we had the opportunity to attend the high school open house this past week. Just such an amazing array of clubs and choices that our students have, and I think it's so important to keep in mind the foundation that we are setting at the elementary school, and then have those kids see what their future holds for them. It's just such an amazing role model of the high school kids, you know? We're so welcoming to the elementary kids and to all of us. So thank you to Mr. Murphy and his staff for putting that together. Thank you.
All right. Well, I'd like to also say thank you to the Watson staff, and it really, it's always so awesome to have the kids come and to watch them. And we're very blessed to be at Watson and to be in the Rockville Center community because I think all the schools do such great things, and the kids do come home, they talk about Makerspace and all the exciting, fun things they get to do. So thank you for all your hard work every day, and thank you for sharing our kids, letting us share our kids with you. Also, I think that it's really awesome, the collaboration. Chris, you talked about that, the collaboration between the high schools and the elementary schools. I know that my daughter got to visit the high school, one of the computer labs today. So she came home telling me all about it, how they got to see the 3D computers, and I think it's so awesome that we're letting that collaboration happen. That's what this is all about. So when we get to hear these things and share these things, we thank all of you for doing that, and thank you to administration for working hard to let that happen. So we appreciate it. And happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Have a great holiday next week. Enjoy. It's here already. I can't believe it. I can't believe it.
Mrs. Tiano?
So we're all going to say the same thing. Thank you, Watson people, for coming. It's always good to see you. And the kids were amazing. Years ago, we had robotics in sixth and seventh and eighth grade come, and we kept questioning sort of what's going to happen when they hit the high school. And then they hit the high school, and we had to revamp some of our curriculum because they were really at a different level than what we were currently doing. So I'm going to throw it back at you, Dr. Pelletiere. These kids, as they start working up toward the high school, we're going to have to totally change what, what we're doing because, because they're going to be...
Yeah, challenge accepted. Mr. Gamache, other teachers are already at training in different places, starting to lay that foundation so that they are ready for these kids.
Amazon is opening their second headquarters here, and these kids are going to get jobs there, so we have to...
$150,000 a year, I read, right? They're going to average.
In like eight years, it might even be more.
Oh, yeah, fantastic.
No, so it's, I mean, it's, it's one of those great problems to have, but it really is, it's, it's amazing. I love seeing them. I love seeing just all the different things that they're doing, and it's really very exciting. So thank you for bringing them in, and happy Thanksgiving, and all the other things.
Mrs. Hackett?
Watson, you just keep topping yourself. I love Watson.
Hundred fifty thousand a year, I read, right? They're going to average.
In like eight years, it might even be more.
Oh, yeah, fantastic.
No, so it's, I mean, it's, it's one of those great problems to have, but it really is, it's, it's amazing. I love seeing them. I love seeing just all the different things that they're doing, and it's really very exciting. So, thank you for bringing them in, and happy Thanksgiving, and all the other things.
Mrs. Hackett?
Watson, you just keep topping yourself. I love Watson. It's like a living museum, and I also wanted to commend you on the beautiful artwork outside of the Makerspace. I know you helped install that, right? I think it's just, everything, every wall in there is special, and I love seeing the kids. So, congratulations to another beautiful addition to Watson. Wanted to say thank you to the Covert parents for all their patience in getting this done. I'm happy for you all that you're going to be reopening and have many fun times ahead for the rest of the school year for the kids. I know it's been a long road. And I also just wanted to say, attended the middle schools, had a really nice assembly on Friday for Veterans Day, where they were able to bring veterans in. And apparently, it's the eighth year that they've been doing it, and they had nine veterans come, different ages, different experiences. And the kids were just so respectful and loved hearing their stories. I really enjoyed it. I was there for the third and fourth period, and I thought Mrs. McGinn and her staff did a phenomenal job over there. So, I wanted to commend her for that and say thank you for honoring our veterans in such a special way. And today, I had a new experience as a parent. So, you know, Ashokin is a rite of passage for Rockville Center, and I have a fifth grader, and today, he left this morning bright and early. So, we start at 6:45. And one thing that I can say, now having been kind of there myself, is there were so many teachers and staff that weren't even going on the trip, that were there at 6:45 just to see the kids off. And if that doesn't scream what we teach and do here in Rockville Center, I don't know what does. I, watching that bus pull away was one of the scariest and happiest moments of my life. And I will feel very happy to see him on Friday afternoon. But I just really want to send out a thank you to all of our teachers and staff. Just entrusting our children with you every day is such a big deal for us as parents, but no less, these trips you take out of the county and overnight and everything, it's, it's just a huge thing. And now that I've been there, I can say thank you. It really means a lot to us as parents, everything that you do. So, thank you.
I'd like to wish everybody happy Thanksgiving in a, in a week or a week and a half. I'd like to just bring to attention, our next board meeting is December the 5th. That's our only meeting for December. We welcome you to join us. We'll be in this meeting, in this room for that meeting. I think bringing the students to our board meetings is one of the best things we do, because then we truly see what happens in the school. We don't often have the opportunity to be in the school while things are happening. So, this helps us understand, and the community understand what, what it's all about. How we're, how we're helping our young students become adults and what they, you know, helping them guide their path forward and help them understand what's ahead in the future. Bringing them to the high school for Z space is a great thing. It takes away a fear of the high school, you know, so they'll have an understanding, a feeling, they'll see the students in the school. I think that's a great opportunity for any, any child in the district to come forward and have a great time in Z space, but then walk through the halls with the kids and have just the feeling of the whole school. I think it brings the community together that way. You know, it helps them share the experience of what our kids are doing here, so what they do in their school. That's all I have to say. Have a great Thanksgiving. We'll see you in December. I can't believe it's holiday time already. Okay, opportunity for visitors. If you, if you come to the mic, please use this, this podium. Give us your name and address, please, and up there, please. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am Ruth Ann McCormick. I'm the project coordinator for the Rockville Center Coalition for Youth. We're a drug-free community coalition, and we work closely with the community, with the school district, with law enforcement. And I just wanted to go over some issues and some things that are happening. First of all, in Newsday, there was a promising announcement about Juul halting some store sales and also certain flavors that they find are the most attractive to the youth. These flavors are mango, fruit, cream, and cucumber. And I had firsthand experience talking to a youth who vapes, and I said to him, what are your favorite flavors? And the first flavor he mentioned was mango. And then I said, did you try cucumber? And he said, yeah, I did it once, but I didn't like it. And I said, do you realize the chemicals that are in the Juul? And he didn't. They have no idea that there are chemicals that allow it to turn into a vapor. These kids are getting addicted to nicotine at alarmingly high rates, and it's a real concern. And they're also, most often, besides the flavored liquids, vaping marijuana. If they're vaping liquids, they're vaping marijuana along with it. And it's scary, because if they continue to do this kind of behavior, and marijuana is made legal in New York State, it's just going to lower the perception of risk for them, because they're going to say, oh, well, it's legal. They already have a low perception of risk, because it's medically available in New York State. So, that alone, okay, people that are under doctor's care are allowed to take it. So, to them, they feel, okay, so that's a, that's okay. That's a low-risk behavior for them. If it's made legal recreationally, it'll be everywhere. I have conversation with Manhasset School District. They also have a DFC coalition. They're fighting a medical dispensary from California, opening up on Northern Boulevard, where all the kids frequent after, you know, they also have an open campus, right down from where the school is. And they are also trying to figure out what they can do as a school district and as educators to stand tall against this policy. I'm hoping that parents will write letters, that the school board will join the teachers' unions and write letters. The, the village board at our last board meeting in October came out strongly against legalization of marijuana, and they spoke about it at the board meeting. It was featured in the Herald, and it really made me feel good to hear them voice so openly about it. They can, they did, luckily, the vape shop in Rockville Center did close. They're trying to figure out what else they can do to prevent marijuana dispensaries from opening in Rockville Center, since we do have our own Incorporated Village and our own codes that we can adapt to concern, you know, that are concerned with the safety of our citizens. But every day, I know everyone gets the Herald. Every week, there's something about marijuana, vaping, oxy, destroying your medications, in every issue of the Herald. And I want to thank the Herald for being such a strong advocate for all of our messages. They ran the vaping billboard as a PSA in every issue across Long Island, and they did it for free. And this is an important message. I know, did everyone see this billboard that was up by the rec center? It was up for most of the summer. And this was actually designed by Sergeant Nicholas DeLuca, who's a very strong partner of the coalition. So, I just want, parents need to be aware. They need to look at what their kids are doing. If they see something plugged into their computer, it most likely is a Juul. It's not a flash drive, because that's what kids are doing. They're plugging them right into the computers in their homes. They're actually making their own concoctions when they do get the containers that the liquids come in. They fill it with their own concoctions that they make. So, you know, just be aware, and we need to all come together and try to, if it is legalized, try to figure out how we can keep our community safe. And what we can do, what steps we can take as a, as a board of education, as a school, as a, you know, teachers and educators and parents. We have letters that we're willing to email to everyone that we already drafted, that you can just put your name on and send to Albany, send to all your representatives, send to government officials locally, and also stores. We have to be careful. Coca-Cola is going to come out with a, a drink that's going to have marijuana in it. It's going to be available in the supermarkets and in the drugstores. So, it's not only going to be, you know, marijuana dispensaries, it's going to be in our drugstores and in our supermarkets. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Liz Boylan. It's about fifteen years ago, I think, I stood here, Dr. Johnson and Mr. Bartels, and it was an honor. I'm here tonight to ask the board of education here to legally, to oppose the legalization of recreational marijuana. But before I begin, I do want to make a special mention to Dr. Leahy. I want to thank you for your service to our country. We just celebrated Veterans Day. You served in the Navy, and now I think you're fighting another battle. And also, I want to thank the board. You spend a lot of time making this school district a fantastic school district. About maybe fifteen years ago, I attended one of the Drug and Alcohol Task Force presentations called Risky Business. My son was in sixth grade, and I went, and then I said, I'm joining. And that was, I think, Eileen Cammy at the time. And I was very impressed with that, and I really learned a lot. I thought I learned a lot growing up in the seventies with Woodstock and pot and Quaaludes and acid and Cheech and Chong, and I never found them funny. I was one of those kids that was ostracized, because I didn't get stoned. So, tonight, I just want to update people, because this is a community that cares about their children. The young people that were here tonight were so incredibly impressive. You talked about a collaboration between the high school and the elementary schools, and that's a great thing. But now, let's talk about the future. Currently, in Albany, the last two sessions, there have been two bills in the House and the Senate to legalize, I'm talking about recreational marijuana. Medical marijuana is not an issue. It's made legal. It's a done deal. The issue with that is, is that they are clustering the dispensaries in North Hempstead. Judy Bosworth, Judy Bosworth, the town of North Hempstead supervisor, is, has heard from the residents, she herself, they are upset. They feel that that is unfair, and it is, it is jeopardizing the safety and welfare of the public, because they're all being clustered in her town. In Albany right now, there are two bills. They were in committee the last session. They did not make it out of committee, therefore did not make it to a vote on the floor. Our new majority speaker, Stuart Cousins, is one of the sponsors of legalizing recreational marijuana. The New York State Department of Health, as you know, came out, and they issued a recommendation, and they said that they felt it was okay to do that. And there were sessions around the county and New York State to get people's feedback. Well, as a coalition, we went, and we spoke. And I have some of that feedback. I have some handouts I'd like to give to the board, and you can take them, you can use the letters. And then I'd like to just get to some points I'd like to make. At some of those sessions, there were two sessions, one in Suffolk and one in Nassau County. There was a good number in Suffolk County that were more opposed to it than in Nassau, for some reason. Suffolk, I believe, is the number one community with an opioid epidemic. And you know what it is. I can say there probably isn't a person in this room that doesn't have a family member, a friend, student, a teacher, that they know that has not been affected by this scourge. And it has all started with marijuana. And I'd just like for you to listen to some of these points. If I may, distribute this to the board? Okay. One is a letter right to the board. The other two are samples. And then the last thing I have is the feedback. Every month, there's a meeting that's open to the public. It's the Task Force, Drug, Alcohol, and Violence Task Force. The Rockville Center Coalition for Youth was formed. The Task Force is part of that. Dr. Leahy leads that, and she's, she listens and takes consensus from the group. There's teachers there, superintendents there, lawyers there, social workers there, people from all areas of the community. A lot of work goes into this. They get speakers. You had Chris Heron last year. You just had a health fair. For fifteen years, you've had speakers and health fairs. Now, fifteen years later, our government is looking to legalize recreational marijuana. And I will tell you this, at the sessions I went to, I got up, I said, I'm a parent, and I oppose it. Well, there were parents that got up and said, I'm a parent, I'm on the PTA, and I smoke pot, and I like it, and it doesn't affect me, and it doesn't affect my children. I kind of think that's abuse if you're smoking pot in front of underage children. So, if I may, as Ruth Ann, who's the project coordinator, given the current opioid crisis gripping our community, state, and country, recreational use of marijuana should not be legalized. It is inconceivable how our state can even consider regulating the recreational use of an illegal drug, marijuana, when they have failed miserably, and I say miserably, at regulating the current legal drug opioids. The village board of Rockville Center is right on to say, and they said it, we don't need another legal drug. We have too many. We don't need it. We don't want it. According to the preliminary data from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, more than 72,000 people in the United States are predicted to have died from drug overdoses in 2017. That's nearly 200 a day, making 2017 the worst year ever for drug overdose deaths in America. If the estimate holds, it means that drug overdoses in 2017 killed more people than guns, car crashes, or HIV/AIDS. In New York alone, it was reported that the opioid deaths increased 29% between 2015 and 2016. Every community in this country is affected by this crisis. According to the analysis of the data from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, a man named Jim Maderas, president of the Rockville Center Institute, he found that New York's opioids crisis is deepening despite well-intentioned interventions at every level of government. There's also the argument that people would like to use marijuana to wean users in recovery from heroin addiction. At the sessions that we went to, there were a number of addicts there in recovery. You know what they said? How can you even think of doing that, when marijuana is how we got started? We won't have a chance at recovery if we go out there, and now marijuana is out there. It's like in alcohol. You know, if you're an alcoholic and you're trying to stop drinking, you stop, you take one drink, you're done for. Many of the youth said that's how they started, then they progressed, they progressed to pills, and then to heroin. If they were to use marijuana, they fear they would never recover. They yearn to be sober and drug-free. Colorado, being one of the first states to legalize recreational marijuana, the state has not gotten what the proponents have promised. In a recent interview, and you can go online, by the Attorney General with the Denver Post, a Mr. Bob Troyer, he stated that legal pot has been a disaster. There has been a 151% increase of marijuana traffic-related fatalities. The black market has exploded in size. The $2 billion in taxes have been eaten up by an increased need for more law enforcement, and youth marijuana use is 85% higher than the national average. And I do believe that the Herald did print the statistics for marijuana use last month, and I believe it's almost doubled. You can correct me on that. With respect to reforming the criminal justice system, there has been an argument that, yes, minorities have been unfairly arrested disproportionately for marijuana. Well, you know what? Consider decriminalization of marijuana. That's preferred. Instead of legalizing it, we could remove criminal penalties, we could expunge the records, and offer justice without commercializing today's highly pure THC. The weed of today is not the weed of the Woodstock generation. It's treated with fentanyl, which causes overdoses and death. It's treated with THC. It's powerful. It's dangerous. It destroys our youth. The Mr. Dewey, who's come a number of times to this district to speak, and many of you have been there, he has shown how between, up to the age of 26, the brain is still developing, that their IQ goes down, their ability to concentrate goes down. The workplace, because of the states that have legalized marijuana, there are now motions to eliminate drug testing. The reason why we have drug testing is to protect the welfare of the public. So, now Colorado has to go out of state to get construction workers to work in-state, because the people are coming up positive for drug use. Think about it. Our school bus drivers, fast forward a year from now, these two bills are going to be in Albany this session. And if you have a majority speaker who sponsored that, and you have a Department of Health who's condoning it, then you need to write letters if your children are important to you. Now, granted, there may be people in this room who disagree with me, and you know what? You have every right to do it, as I have every right to inform you. I don't know how many of you are aware of this, but I have seen, I think we've seen way too many wakes of children, and that did it for me. way too many wakes of children, and that did it for me. Because you know what? That could be my kid. That could be my young adult, and there is a progression. Lastly, when did recreation become synonymous with marijuana? That used to mean exercise. And again, where will legalization end? Is heroin next? Beer, liquor, and wine store distributors are lobbying right now for the license to sell pot and alcohol. That means, you go to Costco in Westbury, that big liquor store? He could be selling pot there a year from now because it'll be legal. They want in on the action. The legalization of recreational use is really about big business making money. They make it on addictive behavior, not responsible behavior. This is not a time for New York to wait and see. This is a time for New York to seek policies that enhance our health and not jeopardize it. So, I asked the Board of Education, oppose legalizing recreational marijuana. And I will say this, when the Rockville Center School District speaks, everybody in New York State listens. At the sessions, there were people that got up that said, "People are afraid to come up and oppose it." Some people are afraid to come up and be in favor of it, but because the state has kind of put a signal on it, what are we afraid of? A year from now, if it's legalized, you are going to be dealing, and you're dealing with high school students now, you're dealing with middle students now that are high. And they'll say, "Alcohol is the same as pot?" Well, if I have a glass of wine, you're not going to get drunk on my glass of wine, but if I smoke a joint, you're going to get contact high. The secondhand smoke is harmful. The smell is offensive. Edibles? Kids don't know what a chocolate chip cookie has pot in it. Stores are looking now to sell chocolate chip cookies and candy with THC in it. An edible, if you eat it, you don't get the high right away. It takes a while for it to go through the digestive system. So, what's happening now? There were overdoses in the hospital. We had people from Catholic Health Services came up, and they said that, yes, they're treating people overdosing on edibles. So, this is what's happening. And make no mistake about it, what happens in the workplace has effect on society. So, if you can, I urge you, there's letters here. I handed them to the board. I'm urging you, Rockville Center School District, come out, oppose it, be a pioneer. New York State has always been known as the Empire State. We've never been followers. We've been the first in education, the first in architecture, the first in everything. And now, because other states are doing it, and Canada's doing it, they're saying, "Well, we should do it?" I don't think that's a reason. But businesses are out there, the stocks are booming, the cost will be too high. Thank you for listening, and I hope that we will protect our youth by not allowing this to happen in this community and in New York State. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Liz. Liz, I'll just add in that I will definitely send a letter to my representative because I truly believe it's the wrong thing for us to do, and the board and the school district will talk about it and see how the school district, you know, want to go forward. But it is definitely, you know, the state is putting money above the welfare of our children. So, that's my opinion, not the board's opinion. It may be the board's opinion. I shouldn't say that. All right. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes as shown on the agenda?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Dr. Johnson?
Superintendent recommends that we accept the gift of two cameras from a resident to be used by our district students.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. We use cameras.
Thank you.
I haven't seen a camera in my house in five years. Can I have a motion to approve the financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to approve receipt of financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to approve item for action, including the DAR and the addendum to the DAR?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any questions? No questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to adjourn the public portion of the meeting and convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing a particular student issue?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I don't know if we can ask for any questions. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much for joining us. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.